Chairman Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Hallie.
Here.
Commissioner Kine.
Present.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
Vice Chair Sykes.
Present.
And Commissioner Wells let us know that he would not be in attendance tonight.
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. If there's any additions, corrections, or changes, make it at this time. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as submitted.
I have a change, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Let me turn to it. Page nine. No, it's the minutes, I'm sorry. I'm getting there.
You're talking about.
Sorry, page five. Page five, it looks like one, two, three, fourth paragraph, it says, "Vice Chair Sykes moved, seconded by Commissioner Sykes." I did do the motion, but I know someone else seconded. Does anyone remember who? It might have been Sandy. Do you think?
Either me or Stephanie.
That's what I was thinking.
I think.
Do you remember?
My recollection is Sandy Blakely.
I think you're right on that.
It was Blakely.
So we can make that correction if whoever makes the motion just indicate that change.
Thank you. And were you impressed that I caught that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm so impressed.
I am too.
Wordsmith.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as amended just now.
I second that.
Oh, in favor?
Aye. At this time, we'll accept oral comments from the public. Members of the public may be heard on any item of interest not on the agenda. Speakers addressing the commission will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Please be advised that by law, the commission is not able to deliberate or take action on issues presented during oral comments. And I think our only people in the audience today are petitioners for point number two today.
I got one for you.
Okay.
If nobody minds, take a moment for today with what happened.
Take a moment of silence?
If nobody minds.
Okay, I think we'll take a few seconds of silence for what took place on Texas. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Our thoughts and prayers are going to be for those families down there at this time. We hope that all goes well, and it's just a difficult situation. I see nobody else in the public, so I motion to close.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye. Point number four under business. Point one, we have the continuation of a public hearing to consider a recommendation to the Fortuna City Council to amend the Fortuna Municipal Code regarding state mandated procedures for SB 9 urban lot splits and two-unit projects by amending Title 17 zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Chapter 17.09. State mandated procedures and Title 16 subdivision, Section 16 dot 04 dot 070 urban lot splits. At this time, I'm looking to entertain a motion to continue this to our June 14th Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make them.
Excuse me, I do have one quick comment on that. So Katie and I were looking at the schedule, and right now, we don't have anything, any projects for the June 14th meeting. If you would like to, you may still consider this on the June 14th meeting, you know, the SB 9 amendments, or you can continue it to June 28th if you want to combine it with.
Should I go December?
What if we did this? We keep it on the 14th if we have some additional agenda items, and if not, we can continue it then to the 28th.
But then you would have to convene.
Just to do that.
The other alternative is you can continue it to the 14th. We could renotice it.
Okay.
But there's a cost to that, that's all.
So it's everybody's pleasure. Should we do the 28th?
28th.
Okay, that'd be great.
So I'll entertain a motion for that. Thank you, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pick this back up on our June 28th meeting unless there is other business that would be brought up on June 14th.
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sykes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Mobley.
Yes. Question. Liz, is it too late for there to be business anyways, though, on June 14th for us?
No, there's still time to notice.
Okay.
We need.
10 days.
10 days. It needs to get published, 10, so actually, a few days before that, so we need like 12.
Okay, thank you.
So there's a few days here.
Yeah, we have another week, actually.
Although we're losing some days with the Memorial Day, so. Okay, agenda item number two, a public hearing to consider the approval of a conditional use permit for mixed-use light industrial, retail, entertainment, and food truck venue. Our applicants are Tevin Fisher and Mickey Mangram, which the property owner is Gail Levitt, and it's for Assessor's Parcel Number 200 dash 353 dash 026. Project site is 164 Dinsmore Drive. Liz, you have an update on all this for us?
Yeah, so I can give you a brief staff report. So the project is a combination. I'll go into a little more detail, but as the agenda title was read, it's a mix of activities, creating a food park and a light industrial and retail site. It's on a 1.1 acre site on Dinsmore Drive, in a light industrial zone, and a use permit is required for the food trucks and the recreational activities, and just at the gathering, the beer garden, the live events, the outdoor activities. So I'm going to go ahead and go over the staff report. This is the location. So you can see Highway 101 is here, and then this is the 12th Street, overpass, underpass, overpass, I guess, or interchange. Let's see, Eel River is to the west, and so this area on Dinsmore Drive is a light industrial zone. So we have a mix of, you know, that type of activity. The wastewater, the city's wastewater treatment plant is to the north. Mercer Frasier gravel mining operations to the west, and then Oakland Dennen's apple orchard is to the east on the other side of 101. And then there are, actually, I'll show you a closer view. There's three parcels right there along Dinsmore Drive, just west of 12th Street, or, sorry, northwest. And I can go ahead and flip to that, it's a little more detailed. The dog park is the first parcel when you turn onto Dinsmore Drive, and then this is a horticultural and a hay feed store, and then this is the parcel in question. And on this close-up view, you can see the treatment plan. That's the settling pond there, Mercer Frasier. This is Strong's Creek that runs on the west side, and actually, this is Roner Creek that joins into Strong's Creek here, and then Clendenon's, and then Sequoia Gas is here. So it is a, you know, light industrial zone. And the activity at the site, the primary activity is the plastic greenhouse packaging and sales. So that will fit in with the light industrial, and then an associated retail store, retail space on the front, and office. And then the rest of the site is vacant, and we'll go to the site plan momentarily. So, you know, there's a lot of space to spread out there. And, you know, the surrounding area, there really won't, there won't be any conflict between this use and those uses. It might go the other way around, where they have to be aware of, you know, issues associated with the treatment plant and maybe Mercer Frasier. But, you know, for the most part, this site itself is very benign in that neighborhood. So, kind of hard to read, but I think you have a slightly bigger plan in your packet. So this shows the existing building, and the entry is off of Dinsmore Drive. This is a shared entry. There's an easement on this driveway with the horticultural hay business to the south. So there's an easement for their trucks to drive through here. You know, those trucks are not so numerous that there would be a problem on this activity here. Pretty, I'm not sure how many trips a day, probably not too many. So on the site, again, the warehouse and the plastic packaging facility is there, and then the office and the retail space is here. There are parking opportunities, paved parking up front, both here and here, and then along the west side. And the activities would be applicants here and they'll, so they will be able to present it as well. But according to the site plan, so the facility will include food truck operators with one permanent food truck, and that would be, is that going to be Fat Hands?
Fat Hands.
Which has been in Fortuna and Ferndale, and we're hoping to bring them back to Fortuna again, because we miss them. Beer garden, special events in the outdoor area, and then some space for some games, including, you know, things that are popular right now, including horseshoes. Did I see it? Cornhole and hatchet throwing. So those are all, you know, really popular, and with the combination of the, you know, the beer garden, and then some outdoor entertainment, music entertainment, and the food trucks. So there would be the permanent food truck, and then a rotating food truck, and then another food truck for special events. So when they have outdoor, you know, entertainment or things like that, and they would utilize the greenhouse and beer garden for both entertainment and for, you know, seating for the food trucks. And then a proposed stage at the south end. So as far as the live entertainment goes, so the overall, the site plan is what I would call a preliminary site plan. You know, it shows the opportunities there, and it shows the layout and what the uses would be, and that's what is being approved tonight. We do, since there aren't any actual measurements, you know, there's things like access and a final parking plan that really need to be confirmed, you know, that it meets the code and meets the fire department's requirements. So one of the conditions is that a final plan would be submitted to the city, reviewed by building, engineering, planning, and the fire department. So, you know, they do have, you know, it's an undeveloped area, so they have a lot of room to play with. The final site plan would show measurements as far as the width, you know, driving aisle widths and parking stall sizes. And the main thing, the fire department, there is a condition for fire, from the fire department, that it at least a minimum 20-foot access, you know, driving aisle would be maintained through the site. And, you know, they're satisfied with basically a T turnaround. So that's, the fire department looks for either a full circular radius, I think of 45 feet, or a T-shaped, you know, maneuvering area where they can pull in and then out, and then onto the street again. And that would also include, what they, they would also need to show trash pickup. I believe that's added as a condition of approval as well. So that is something that would need to be.
Changed.
Changed and approved by the, you know, recology disposal, so they can get their trucks in there. So, and we would do that when a site plan is submitted like that. You know, it would also pick up any ADA accessibility requirements. That's a condition of approval from the building department. And that's a typical thing, one of their tasks that they perform anyway. This is considered, you know, I'm not sure if they are going, they may need a building permit for some minor changes, you know, I'm not sure if they, you know, would typically, you might see moving an interior wall or doing some electricity, you know, electrical work. I'm not sure if they would need an ADA bathroom. I think it's already been improved from the previous use. But normally, what we would call in this case, you know, change of occupancy for the site, since these are new uses, it does go through the building department for review for ADA, and actually, all of the city department. So we check it for zoning, and then any engineering requirement. So that's a very normal use, or a very normal process that we would go through. In this case, you know, they also need a conditional use permit, so that's coming to the planning commission. But, yeah, the site plan will show how the site is going to work and meet the code, and it also gives the city the ability to look at, you know, the planning, the zoning and building codes and things like that. So, and it will get referred to those departments that I mentioned. And then, since the, you know, the information relating to the live entertainment, that we're treating that kind of as a later phase, as far as it won't be triggered or it won't be allowed until they show the, you know, that they have the parking for that type of facility. So they would need to do some projections on the number of, you know, the, a number of attendees, and then demonstrate that the parking is available. There really isn't any room for parking on Dinsmore Drive. There's no walking area. So engineering department is going to make sure that no parking signs are placed on Dinsmore Drive to prevent any, you know, we really don't want that to take place. So there will be no parking signs. And then one potential that they have is to leave space or, you know, just have an arrangement with the business to the south. So that's something that they would bring to the city and demonstrate that they have a written agreement. So we feel really comfortable with that. And, you know, and also just visiting the site, you know, the applicants can talk on this, but it doesn't seem like there's room for a really large event. You know, it seems like it's something, you know, just going to be some nice entertainment that will, you know, be enjoyable when they have like an extra food truck and have the games out. So, you know, I really don't see it being like a concert where you're going to get mobs of people or anything like that. I think it's going to be a really nice outdoor environment to enjoy the good food and beer and play the games.
Liz, I do have a quick question about this conditional use thing with regards to the live entertainment. So tonight, we're approving this, but not the live entertainment aspect of it, and will the petitioners, and this is for you guys to know, too, would that mean they have to come back here to get approval for the live entertainment at another time for the use?
No, we wrote the condition that the live entertainment would be allowed when they submit a site plan that shows that they have adequate parking and bathrooms, and that they identify the number of occupants, and again, show the parking plan.
Okay.
So once they, you know, once they get their final plan, they can either kind of design it then, just, you know, measuring out the parking spaces and the access width, and then showing the area where, you know, attendees will congregate. They can show it then, or they can just kind of do that as a later phase and start operating and then show, see how the site works.
But if we approve this conditional use permit tonight, then we're moving forward with the entertainment as well, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure they understood that they probably have to come back with the parking size, so it doesn't get too much confusion for them.
Well, it is written that staff would approve the parking.
Right, it's staff level, yeah.
Okay.
So why are we pushing this through now without everything in place?
A couple of reasons. The first one is that they have an agreement that's only good through, I think, through the beginning of June, and because we felt like it's, you know, it's kind of a special use. I think it's something that's really, would be, you know, a good economic incentive or an economic attraction for Fortuna to have, you know, it's kind of special, fun location with these, you know, variety of activities that are really popular right now, and food that's, you know, really, has a really good reputation to bring that back to Fortuna. And because the site, I think, you know, it is mostly undeveloped, you know, it's just got that one building. They have a lot of room to work with, and, you know, I think it's going to fit. The components that they have there, the food trucks and the game areas and the green, you know, the greenhouse awning are all lend themselves to be kind of moved around as they need to measure out their aisles and their parking.
Ms. Shore, am I correct in assuming that if we don't approve it tonight, it's also in the economic best interest of the applicant to know that before they begin
Right.
investing other funds, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, that's something that we always deal with, having to balance that. But yes, definitely, before they invest a lot of money up front, you're getting equipment, trucks, site designers.
Liz, I did have a couple of other quick questions. On the last page, 28, it's entitled 164 Dinsmore Drive. I'm just trying to get some clarity for myself. The second paragraph that says that the office space is shared by Northern Supply Packaging, Fat Hands, Bakery, and Bistro, and Hubbell Grub Food Park. The petitioners are here just for Fat Hands, right? Because, Noel, you're for Hub Grub, too?
Well, Northern Supply.
You can go up to the.
Come up to the, and introduce yourself, too, for the record, okay?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mickey Mangram. I own Northern Supply Packaging. I've been in packaging industry for about 30 years. I supply a lot of local businesses. South Fork Water, for instance, if you look at the bottom of their boxes, their cardboard comes from me, as well as the label on all their bottles. Fox Farm Desserts on us, and because we're in Humboldt County, the greenhouse industry. I've been doing greenhouse plastics since 2008. Spare Time Supply used to buy all of their plastic from me. I've branched off onto my own industry now, or my own company. So Northern Supply is the primer, because quite frankly, Northern Supply makes a lot more money than Fat Hands. Together, Tevin and I have an LLC, no, it's an LLC. Fat Hands is an LLC, but we want to create a new entity that people can talk about, that that's where Hub of Grub comes in. We don't know if we're going to incorporate that, or it's going to be a DBA under Fat Hands. That's all yet to be determined if this gets approved.
Okay, because that leads to my next question then for you. The next, two paragraphs down, it says, "The southwest corner of the building will be the Hub Grub retail space." The question I have, though, it says here, "The space will be a marketplace for local makers and producers." I didn't quite understand what you meant by that.
Local, so Fat Hands is extremely popular, or some, you may know that. We do, everything that we do is in-house, the ketchups, this hot sauce. We've been having a lot of requests when the restaurant was open as a brick and mortar. Right now, it's used primarily as a rentable venue, and we have a beer garden, as well as a commercial kitchen for our food truck. But we've been asked to package and promote Fat Hands Fire Hot Sauce, as well as Fat Hands Ketchup. So if any, so if, like, you know, we've talked to a taste of Bim, and I think every food truck, they're trying to create their own entity, as well as their own market, by not only doing the food, but the items that go along with food. So we want to offer a space where local artisans, producers can, kind of like, you know, Pearson's does for the Christmas market.
Yeah.
But just something for local people to bring their goods together at a local shop. And then there'll also be, you know, samples of greenhouse plastic and stuff, the not, you know, not so exciting stuff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just needed that clarity. I didn't quite understand.
Sure, I understand, yeah.
I have a question related to it, sir. So Fat Hands was on Main Street in Ferndale, correct, or are you still?
The brick and mortar is still there.
And that's what you're referring to as a place where people can rent it for events?
It's a rentable, it's, so we're getting, you know, quite frankly, we're getting about three to four catering calls a day. The food is extremely popular. And so it's our commercial kitchen, so we cater out of there, and it's also the commercial kitchen for the food truck. And it's a rentable space. If somebody wants to come in, we do a lot of rehearsal dinners. We did a bridal shower this last Sunday. So it's a rentable venue, and we have our beer and wine license, so it just kind of fits for Ferndale as we get our feet back under us.
So you currently have the food truck over there, like by the?
Currently, the food truck is waiting for the, it's been approved by the city of Ferndale. It's licensed in Ferndale, because Ferndale is the only city around, I guess, that has their own health inspector. But we're waiting for the California certificate, is that correct?
Yeah, California certificate, yeah.
And the past, the prior owners were negligent in getting us the registration. So the registration expired. We had to get it re-smogged, and so we're two weeks away, hopefully.
Now it's just a waiting game.
And now it's just a waiting game to get our California certificate.
So the food trucks new for your business?
Correct.
Okay.
We didn't want to, when we shut down the restaurant, I mean, COVID, we opened a month and a half before COVID. Two weeks after that, I cut my fingers off, and then we had a, we had a gas explosion in the restaurant. So it's just been, we're reinventing business plan every time, that even though being in Ferndale, you're supposed to, you know, great foot traffic, blah, 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 which it is, it was just, it's a tough industry. And then nobody wanted to work. Getting employees was just atrocious.
Amen to that.
And our landlord, Jim and Penny Ferry from Ferndale, who I, you know, I grew up with Ferndale, so I've known him my whole life, super accommodating with, you know, the struggles that we have in the restaurant industry, as well as, you know, our price per square foot on rent. It didn't make sense to let go on the brick and mortar and then lease another commercial kitchen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question. On page 21, it says, this is part of the stuff for having a food truck. Food vending vehicles shall return daily to their commissary for replenishment of foodstuffs. So this, this will be the commissary, correct? This is the supply?
No, no.
No?
The supply is the Ferndale restaurant.
Okay.
For Fat Hands. I can't speak on any other food truck that comes in. The goal, eventually, speaking to Nate Levitt, is to buy the building and put a commercial kitchen in there, possibly for other commissaries to rent from us a commercial kitchen space, because they're incredibly rare to find a good commercial kitchen. You know, I looked into renting at the fairgrounds, and I could rent the turf room for $100 a day, which is a great deal, but our rent is cheaper than 20 days, you know, a month renting at the fairgrounds.
So your food truck in the future, envisioning this out, has to go back to Ferndale to get more food?
No, no, we can, we can try.
Hi, my name is Tevin Fisher, co-owner of Fat Hands with Mick. My understanding with the food truck, so you have your commissary kitchen, the food truck actually does not need to go back. You can have a runner car bringing supplies back and forth, because you are not allowed to store anything in the food truck overnight. So.
Okay.
So the run back.
So the food truck will be staying, but we will be transporting food back to the commissary kitchen in Ferndale.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
You guys aren't worried about that big pond right next to you? I'm just saying, because we're not that far away, and on a good day.
Sure.
It's, come on. I mean, you hit it going down the freeway.
So my understanding, our understanding of it is, there's certain times in the year.
Nick, please.
My understanding of it, the, as it proposed to us, there are certain times of the year where it's definitely worse than others.
Yeah.
And speaking, I don't remember the gentleman's name that we spoke with in the prelim meeting, but, you know, we would be notified, and we have no problem with, you know, shutting down for four or five days if it's a, you know.
You'll be notified.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure I will be. But, so primarily, no, primarily, no. If information given to us was adequate, and that it's a couple, no?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I work that far away from there, right around the corner front.
Sure.
And I know, depending on which way the wind's blowing, it's either coming from Ferndale, the cows, or coming from the city of Fortuna.
It's a concern, but it's also a dice roll, because, you know, I believe in this plan. I think, I think Fortuna needs it.
I do.
I think for, you know, entertainment anywhere right now is going to grab some attention. We, we want to get signage from Willetts North. My gut tells me I'm not so, you know, so much from the north coming south, but people coming north from the south, I want, I want it to be similar to the Peg House, as where it don't not stop, I'm not going to jump on their catchphrase. But still, I want, you know, boom, this is coming up, this is coming up, you know, you just missed, or something to that nature. I really think it could fly.
No, I think it's a great idea. I wish it was in a different location. But it is, it's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree. The concept's great, I think, like he said. You know, the location, 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 right, for anything?
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, any other questions for our petitioner or Liz?
I have a quick question. If you guys have the food truck, would you be bringing back the potato chips? I'm just saying, I miss those.
Yes.
I was going to say, don't forget the donuts. Any other questions? If not, before we do make a motion, I just wanted to bring out something. If this does pass, Katie, I did notice under page 10, the resolution page, Mick's last name is spelled incorrectly at the very first line. I believe there's supposed to be an R in your name, correct, Mick?
Yes, M-A-N-G-R-E-N.
You see that there?
I can correct that before we get signatures.
Right, I just wanted to make you aware before I forgot. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, we need public comment, don't we?
Yes, I do, it's true. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I know there was a question in regards to the dumpster. If you look on the north end, in the Northern Supply Warehouse section, that is where we plan on having a dumpster, as well as additional parking, no?
We'll talk.
Okay, perfect. But for events, and like you said, you know, live music, it's not going to be a huge concert. It's going to be more of a casual, there's a band there playing while people are eating. So there will be additional parking available as well in that section, so. in that section, so.
And I'm grateful that our vice chair pointed out, we do have somebody else in the public, so I should open this up for public comment at this time.
Yeah.
Guess we'll give it a minute.
Seeing now, motion closed.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment at this time.
So moved?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Katie, you want to call the vote?
Uh, we don't need to do a roll call vote.
That's what I thought. Okay, then I, now I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution number P dash 2022 dash 3086, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Fortuna for a conditional use permit for a mixed-use light industrial, retail, entertainment, food truck venue.
I second.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Blakely.
Yes.
Chairman Bradley.
Yes.
Commissioner Hallie.
Yes.
Commissioner Kine.
Yes.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Sykes.
Yes.
I like your business plan.
We want you to, I want you to succeed, I think we all do.
Yeah, it sounds fun, I love cornhole.
The, um, I guess the next thing on our agenda is the planning commission staff, do we have any, uh, updates you want to bring us to our attention, Liz? I didn't see anything in the packet, so.
I think we took care of business on continuing the previous item, um, we just have a couple of smaller, we don't have any, um, big applications, actually, we are working on one, but I think that's a few months out.
Okay.
Um, we're wrapping up some subdivisions, Katie just took the multifamily subdivision on, that's on Smith Lane, that they just got occupancy, if you haven't driven by on Smith Lane, there's some really beautiful apartments, um, that just got built, they're very elegant and beautiful actually, um, kind of make a big statement on the street. That 36 develop, unit development was also subdivided, so each building is on its own parcel, and that was, that's, that was a pretty big process getting that whole thing, getting the public improvement plans designed and constructed, and then the buildings, um, you know, those plans reviewed, approved, and inspected, Gary and Jeff Baldwin, the other building, the building inspector, um, were really busy on that, and then just, um, the subdivision map itself is kind of a lengthy process, so that's actually kept us pretty busy for the last, at least six months or more, more, including the construction, last year and a half. So we're glad, it's always exciting to get a map recorded, it's also kind of a game to get all of their, they've got some very detailed requirements that are challenging, but fun, so that was a, a good thing. Um, that's really, I don't have anything else, does anybody have any questions? As always, you know, just give me a call or email if you have any questions about anything going on around town.
I just want to say thank you, Liz, you guys always do an exceptional job. Everything's good, detail's great.
Thank you.
Well, the last thing on our agenda is adjournment, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to close.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Hi.
Congratulations to you guys.